Greetings, everyone. Thank you all for coming today and what a joy it is whenever the counties, two, let's say, big dogs can come together and share. And so we are here today and I am going to go ahead and call the Board of Education, call this meeting to order for the Union County Board of Education. Take a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
We're going to share Mike tonight?
Oh, you got one.
Oh, okay. You have your own, don't you? Great to see everyone tonight. It's good to be back with the Board of Education. I would like to call the meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners. If I can have a motion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, are we going to approve the agenda?
Yeah, we're going to do that now.
That's next, Commissioner Soss.
Motion for approval of the agenda. All in favors, aye.
Commissioners, all those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Madam Chair, prior to a vote, I have two items I'd like to add to the agenda tonight.
Commissioner Soss, this is a special cause meeting and it's already been published and I have spoken with our attorney today and we're going to stick to what was published in the notice.
Okay, then I'll request these items being added to the agenda for the County Commissioners.
You can do that at a future meeting. Thank you so much. All those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Good deal.
Okay. Next on the agenda is opening comments. Once again, we are grateful for our team of county commissioners. It is a pleasure to have you here. For three of you, your old home, and hopefully you find it in good order. And we look forward to a robust presentation on both sides. And we are truly appreciative of our time we're going to share together.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is wonderful to be back home tonight and to be with Union County Public Schools. I know that we, many of us feel that way. So we have, the first item is going to be the 2026 County Budget Preview and Process. So we'll kick it off with the Union County presentation.
Yes, yeah, we recognize Jason May is there as our budget and grants director and I'm recognizing him. Thank you, Ken Abes. Chair Merrill, Chair Vincent, Vice Chair Helms, Vice Chair Helms, distinguished members of Board of the County Commissioners and distinguished Board of Education.
You've been waiting for that helms and hounds.
I practiced that earlier to make sure I got all of the right acronyms and titles in there. My name is Jason May. I'm the Director of Budget and Grants Management for the county. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak with you this afternoon. I've been asked to be able to walk you through a little bit of the county budget preview and to talk a little bit about our process, specifically two of our revenue streams. Am I on, can you hear me? Good, all right, just want to make sure as I go through this. The first one we want to talk about is our ad valorem tax. So several, recently, the county went to a bifurcated tax rate. What this does in essence is it creates our own nation. We all have our own tax rates and we all go through this process. And so I know that many of you probably over the past several weeks, if not months, have had many conversations around revow. I'm not here to talk about revaluation tonight. What I want to talk about is the process that we do before revaluation. So when we go into a revow year, my team goes back and looks at what the ad valorem tax base growth has been on an annual basis over the past four years. We average that out and then we run through a normal process where we do an ad valorem organic growth rate where we'd be able to add that percentage. We've averaged that, it's a little bit under 4%. We add that to the tax base and then we run through the tax rate to be able to do the organic tax increase that you have for the year. That tax base is the number that we use to be able to do the revenue neutral tax rate that we will talk about later in the year. This allows the town, excuse me, coming from a town, so forgive me, I'm still working on my acronyms. It allows the county and all of the other funds to be able to continue to receive organic increases while they go through an ad valorem tax year, or a revow year. So what we have done is we've done that, again, it was 4%. We've taken the ad valorem tax base, increased that by 4%, run through the tax rate that we normally do, and that provides us with our organic growth and ad valorem tax rate. And this will be what we will base the revenue neutral tax rate off of. So for our friends in the education fund, they're going to receive about 8.8 million, 8,837,933 dollars. That's going to be split up, as you can see, Union County Public Schools and Charter Schools receives about 8.6 million. South Piedmont Community College receives about 229,000. That also has an amplifying effect in the education debt fund. Again, we're going to have just short of 700,000 in organic growth. Now, these numbers, as we go through, as I told Board of County Commissioners several weeks ago, we're in the process of creating a budget. Our numbers are changing rapidly. Oftentimes, when I pulled together with our county commissioners in February, I told them that the numbers that I showed them that day are out of date before I get off of the stage. I'm now moving to a place where some of my numbers are going to be a little bit more stable. These numbers probably will change, but they won't change wholesale at this point in time. This, again, is looking at the organic rate. The second revenue stream that I wanted to walk us through this afternoon is sales tax. Sales tax has several articles that go towards school debt funding, and so that has an effect upon the education fund budget. As you can see, that far right column there, that is our percent of budget collected. And I highlight that because I want to be able to make sure that everybody here understands sales tax growth is far and away the most difficult revenue stream to be able to project. It is reliant upon consumer spending and consumers are fickle. Over the past four weeks, I've had countless people tell me they are going to go buy a car and I have had countless people tell me they are going to not go buy a car because of what's going on in the economy right now. That is what we are trying to project out, whether or not they are going to buy a car or not going to buy a car, and I am projecting it out 16 months in advance from today. Today is April 10th, 2025. I am projecting revenue that will not come into the coffers of the county until July, August of 2026. Think back 14, 16 months ago, as December, January of 2024, 2025, we didn't know what was going to be happening right now. That's the struggle that we, as the Budget Department, have, is that we're trying to project out what we think we're going to get 16, 17 months in advance. That's difficult to do. That is even more difficult when you take all the economic uncertainty that has been pumped into the system over the past several weeks. Again, I went from having economists that I followed, none of them talking about recessions, to all of them talking about recessions and then back again. That is a difficult place in which to be able to project out what our revenues are going to be in advance. Right now, we're at 4%. That is a number that we are actively talking through as we go through this process. That 4% number provides the education debt fund an increase of 904,760 dollars. Just want to talk a little bit about our process going from here. We're at April 10th. We expect to be able to see the Board of Education and UCPS's budget here in the middle of May. We look to be able to get our county manager's recommended budget to our clerk before the end of the month in May. We look in the beginning of June to be able to present and have a public hearing for that budget and then pass that in the end of June. This is where I had a young man that worked for me in Richmond that was a Navy man, he was on an aircraft carrier, and he said that doing budgets is an awful lot like landing a Navy jet on an aircraft carrier. You go from running at 450 miles an hour to going zero in about five days. And so that's where we are at right now, is we are running very, very fast to be able to get to a point in time where we have the best information that we possibly can to be able to project out what revenues are for next year. It's a difficult process and it's not something that we're 100% on all the time, but we're doing our very best to be able to get those numbers into the right hands at the right time. With that, I'm more than happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm sure.
Yes, Commissioner Helms.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Jason, first of all, thank you for the information. I really appreciate that and your presentation. I want to raise this question because I think I know the answer, but I want some confirmation here. As we're looking at the sales tax projections.
Yes, sir.
It looks as though, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we're getting more towards historical norms.
Yes, sir.
Based off of a lot of abnormal activity from, say, '21 through '23 where we were obviously dealing with COVID. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So you can see, if you look at the delta between '20 and '22, you went up by $18 million in that timeframe. That is inflation. That is inflation and trying to keep up with it. And this is not something that is singular to Union County. In Richmond, we struggled to be able to do this because you were going into the '22 budget with everybody talking about recessions and the pandemic and we were wearing masks and you come out of '22 with a 20% increase upon your sales. And so that is difficult then, going into the next year, you're projecting again, out early. It's difficult to be able to do it. I know a lot of budget directors right now that are looking at that timeframe between '19 and '23 and throwing it out the window and not using it as part of their past to be able to project off of because it is so uncertain and because it's so all over the place to be able to do it. A lot of them are going back and looking at 2014 through 2019 and then looking at their past two years to be able to do that, to be able to try to mitigate some of that uncertainty that you had during the pandemic.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, please.
By all means.
And Ms. McLamb, if I'm not making sense on this, please add in or chime in. So as the Board of County Commissioners will hear when we present tonight, our process this year has been a little bit delayed because we've been waiting for our public discussion about what the tax rate has yielded for UCPS. By now, we typically understand what the number is that we tend to try to back into from a budgetary standpoint to build a balanced budget. If you go back to the slide that says FY 2026 ad valorem, so on this line, is there any way, if the county commissioners were voting today or if you were making a recommendation today, what would that allocation be based on this slide?
The allocation is based upon the slide. So Union County Public Schools, I'm not sure, forgive me for not knowing, the delta between the public schools and the charter schools, but that split would be between the 8.6 million that's over on the right.
Do you subtract the debt fund as well?
No, sir, the debt fund is an addition. Again, this is where you have your own individual islands. You have an education fund and then an education debt fund.
Got it, thank you.
I have a question, too. Could you define organic growth?
Organic growth is growth that happens organically. It's development, it's new construction, it's renovations, refits, it's the, what we usually see through the year. It's everything short of me looking at your house and saying, "In 2022, it's worth this amount of money and now in 2026, it's worth this amount of money." It's what we would see in an organic, in a regular, non-revow year. So new development, new construction, retrofits, upfits, things of that nature, all those have an impact upon the property value. That's, Mr., the Tax Administration Group goes through that process every year to be able to look to see what that growth has gone.
Thank you.
County Manager Brian Matthews.
I just wanted to state, and I think Jason said this, but just to clarify, it is not based on revaluation of properties. It is what we normally grow in any given year.
It's basically growth that happens organically.
Boarding questions? We have them before us.
Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Thank you very much. All right, it's our turn. And so we're now going to hear from Dr. Houlihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to the UCPS Board and to our Board of County Commissioners, first of all, thank you all for being here this evening. It's great to be together. Second of all, I want to be on record this evening so that our colleagues know, I say this all the time, but the relationship between staff to staff continues to be tremendously positive, as does our county manager, Mr. Matthews and his team. Thank you all for the collaboration, the support. We really appreciate the ongoing conversations and just want the public to understand that, yes, we talk often and we very much appreciate that relationship. This evening, Ms. McLamb, our Chief Financial Officer, is going to give the Board of County Commissioners and our UCPS Board kind of a high-level overview of information she presented as my budget recommendation last Tuesday. I shall review our proposed operating budget as well as our proposed capital budget. We understand that things will change between now and when the UCPS Board adopts the budget, but what you're going to see this evening is basically the list of priorities that we've identified, projecting out of the needs of the next fiscal year. So I'll turn it over to Ms. McLamb.
Thank you, Dr. Houlihan, and good evening. And Board of County Commissioners and Board of Education. So as Dr. Houlihan mentioned, we're going to, I'm just going to do a high-level overview of our budget, our operating request. Something I do want to bring attention to and just remind everyone is a few of the statistics about Union County Public Schools. We are the sixth largest district in North Carolina and in the current school year for '24, '25, we had 40,870 students. Our graduation rate, which is the number one graduation rate in North Carolina for '23, '24 was 93.3%. So we are a very high-performing district. We have a little over 5,000 employees and of those, over 2,500 are teachers. So more than half of our employees are our teachers. I do bring some of the ranking. As you all know, the state budget is designed to allocate funds based on a tiered system. There's a three-tiered system, we are in tier three, which means we get the lowest amount of funding per pupil of any other county in North Carolina. I bring some of those statistics to light. We did do some teacher supplements this current school year. Last year, our teacher supplement was at number 50 and with the 1,001,500 that we added to the supplement this current school year, it brought our teacher supplements to number 37. We've been striving to get to number 10 for many years and we are still working to do that. As you'll see in some of our next slides, I'm putting together something to get us there. So right now, we still aren't sure about, kind of as you mentioned, there's some uncertainty about where we are with the state budget. We don't have any numbers from the state on what our supplement or what our salary increases nor our benefit increases will be. So I've built this budget based on historical approximate increases that we received over the last few years. So I've got a 5% increase on all of our benefits and a 3% increase for our salaries. We do have some projected enrollment increase potentially in our charter schools. There is a charter school, Somerset Prep. They have till the end of this month to approve some of those applications, so we're not really sure where they are with that and we will continue to monitor that for next year. So right now, just for us to maintain operations and to keep up with where we currently are, I've built in increases for our utilities and insurance costs as well as charter school enrollment growth. Then with salary and benefits, we are, that I have built in, not knowing yet what those numbers will be, that brings us to $3.9 million to maintain our current status if nothing changed. When we look at some additional needs that we have throughout the district, there, as you all recall, there was a $3 million allocation that we received from you all this current school year. Those funds we use to support our EC, our Exceptional Children, and our English as a Second Language, our ELL population, and as well as our tutoring. Dr. Houlihan has led the way in the state with our math tutoring model and we have continued to provide those additional supports in our schools. We have built in some inflationary increases. As you know, everything is costing more, so we have built some inflationary increase for our, specifically our technology and our facilities departments. Then we have a wonderful benefit for state employees, parental leave. That parental leave allows for eight paid weeks of leave for a parent. That leave has created, leave of absences have created an additional need for our subs. We've got a bump up in our sub needs, so I've built in that sub cost. Now we get to investing in our employees and some of the staff supplement increases and market studies that we've been doing. So we've built in a $2,000 increase to our teacher supplement schedule. To do that $2,000 increase is a little over $7 million, it's $7.6 million. That $2,000 increase, if all things stay equal, would bring this Union County Schools to number 10 in the state, which, like I said, we've been trying to at least get in that top 10 to top 15 for the last lots of years. Plus, we've built some, you know, the market is changing for our staff. We are trying to attract and retain top talent. So in our skilled trades for facilities and in transportation, we are looking to make sure we stay competitive so that we can attract and retain those employees. As you know, you know, the more turnover you have, the more expense you have. So we're really working hard to try to compare ourselves to like positions in those specific areas. It's not just other school districts. We are competing with you and others, so we are trying to keep up with that. Then we have also some program expansion. So we've got some, as you all know, we've looked for many years for contracted, our psychologists. We are competing with a lot of districts in the state for psychologists and others and we would like to implement a paid internship program for them. Hopefully, we can get them in the district, we can expose them to Union County Schools and potentially retain them when they graduate. So I didn't hit everything, I hit all the highlights, but the additional needs that we've hit on in the district is a little over $14 million, which is a big number. But the majority of that is related to that salary increase and that supplement increase for our teachers. Then we get to our operating capital. So as we have in years past, our operating capital is just continuous improvement to maintain our facilities, classroom technology needs, as well as any aging vehicles or fleet needs that we have. So our facilities department met with all of our principals when we had our, when they come to the central office, they meet with Dr. Houlihan to do mid-year progress reports and they met with every principal in the district to assess the needs of each school and to review with the facilities team some of the facility needs at every school. We have Transportation who has requested several activity buses. We've got several activity buses plus some replacement vehicles that they need. School Nutrition requested some funds this year. We've got a lot of schools that were built at the same time. They're about 20 years old now. So we're trying to build in some replacement for equipment in those cafeterias to ensure that we don't have all things happening at one time. So we're building in a replacement plan for them. Then we have our laptop leases. This year, we will be renewing the lease for our three through five students that have laptops in grades three through five. And then we, annually, we provide a band uniform replacement cycle and this coming year is with Piedmont for $50,000. So that total request is almost $29 million. So when I put all the current appropriations, so currently between operating capital and our local operating budget, you all provide 149 million, almost 150 million dollars. This request has us with an increase of a little over $27.7 million, which would, combined of our local operating and capital requests, of 177 million dollars is coming through. So there's graphs and some statistics and things in your packets. I'm not going to go through those slides necessarily, but I will open up for any questions you all have.
I have a question. Have you heard either through the grapevine, of course unofficially because it's early, any of our surrounding counties of any supplement increases that are in the works or have been requested?
I am not aware. I do have a meeting with, you know, I meet with our bit largest 12 CFOs on a fairly regular basis. A few of them kind of hold their hand pretty close. They don't really tell a whole lot, so I have not seen any proposed increases at this point.
Too early yet?
It is a little early. A few of them, I know CMS, they always propose something. We will never reach CMS, but I have not seen what their increases are. But when I run the numbers and I look at what districts are ahead of us in supplement, the increase that we've proposed getting us to 10 is more likely because those that are ahead of us are going to, they're not, we're not going to bypass them. You see what I'm, no, I'm trying to say, like, if they increase, it's not going to decrease where I think our ranking might get to, from what I can see.
The only other thing I would add is, as a reminder, we saw a phenomenon last year of having to be much more competitive with the state of South Carolina. There's a bipartisan support in their General Assembly to raise beginning teacher pay to $50,000. And so for the first time in a long, long time, we had a significant number of employees leave us to go over to South Carolina. So that's just another competing factor that we're facing.
And I think that is unique to us because of where we're located.
And considering the last year's budget, it didn't move the needle on the 113 versus total per pupil funding?
I'm sure.
Commissioner Helms.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shawna, just a couple of quick questions. With the potential of Somerset Prep, I know you guys probably have these numbers and maybe our staff does, too. Can the total charter school enrollment be shared with our board? Is that possible to do? Do we have that?
The enrollment numbers are in some of the graphs in the slides in the back. I try to at least give you the projected numbers. Let's see. Right here is our projected numbers. So right now, I'm projecting them to have a little, right at 5,200 students in charter schools.
Perfect, thank you very much, appreciate that. Second question is, as I understand it, the General Assembly awarded, well, the county and UCPS a significant amount for a potential nanatorium. That was either last year or possibly even the year before.
Correct.
Has that, where does that stand now and can that be potentially allocated for other capital projects?
My understanding is that the way it was allocated to the school district, it was $8 million that was allocated for athletics facilities. We've had multiple conversations with our representatives, David Willis, and I don't really know where we stand making any other project, using those funds for any other projects. There is a deadline on that, that money has to be spent by October. So I think at this point, oh, okay.
That's a swimming pool thing.
Yes, that's, yes, it is. Yes.
David Willis gave us $8 million, but that's not enough, what? That's not enough money that can.
Right, to do that, right.
Who's going to take care of it? It's like $150,000 a year just for keeping it up, yes. So we don't know where we are right now. We've told them before that we don't think we can do that, right? So, and that's where we are.
And that was going to be my suggestion is, is that, you know, if it wasn't feasible for us to, you know, utilize those funds for the purpose intended by the North Carolina General Assembly.
But it says athletics.
Okay.
In the budget, it says $8 million for athletics. It does. And right now, it's just sitting there. We haven't taken the money, yeah.
No, we have not.
Yes.
So interestingly enough, this came across Congressman Harris's desk about a week ago. from Representative David Willis. And it was my understanding that Union County Public Schools informed Representative Willis that you did not have land, that you did not know where you would even put a nanatorium.
The question, yes, that's true.
That, that's one of them, but that, I think we, we did discuss that in detail, and I think we just all agreed that it was just.
On the school board.
Way too much.
On the school board, you can't give away land.
Right.
For nothing. So that's an issue, so.
But regardless of that, the money that he wanted it for, because we did ask, what happens, can we, if we don't want to put a pool in, or aquatics, whatever, can we do it for something else? And I guess the answer was no. And then we, then we, we started discussing what additional needs are going to be for a pool like that. That's a lot. You have lifeguards, you have maintenance and added, I mean, we're having a hard time just keeping getting teachers. I can't imagine that on top of it. So I think that was the biggest thing we discussed.
We don't have the money to do that.
Yeah, it's just not in the, because there's a one-time, right? One-time amount that he was, yeah.
And you're dealing with chemical storage and everything else too.
The $8 million was to build it.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, I believe a nanatorium costs significantly more than $8 million. I've heard 20, 20 million. I've heard 30 million, and, and that's not including land. And staffing and annual maintenance.
That's where we are. Yep, this is where we are right now.
How, how?
I believe the state hopes that money until, until.
It's at state, the state budget office.
When I asked Shawna, that we took the money, we didn't take it yet.
No.
Because we don't know what's going to happen.
So just out of curiosity real quick, and this is me, so they, they seriously won't, like, they can't just, they, we have, they have that money, it's sitting there. They can't just say, hey, you guys can use it instead of.
You have that specific purpose for.
For supplements?
Specifically for athletics, and you have to refine documentation for what it's for.
One is extracurricular, and it's non-instructural, and it's very different allocations.
Okay, I was just curious, I didn't know if that was something. Thanks.
Yes.
How, what was the process by which it landed with the county?
Asking him to find money to pay the difference.
Thank you.
But that has to go with the, the money for 150 million, I mean, $100,000 for, for every year. Who's going to, we don't have that, we don't have that kind of money.
The county's responsibility to, you know, set that aside for capital and for, you know, ongoing, you know, ongoing cost.
I have a question too. The $50,000 for the band, is that enough for Piedmont because they have a very large band?
So. We did support a ridge and it was fine and.
Okay, just making sure.
They were huge.
Because a lot of them have a, like, this, this helps to supplement it. It's not, you know, a lot of them have their, their uniforms on a cycle and they're, they're buying what they can, and if, if they buy all the uniforms they need, or if they just replace them, they can buy some equipment if they need to. So we let them use it that way.
Yes, County Manager.
Oh, sorry. Shawna, can you tell me if you have an estimate for what you think the charter school payment will be for this upcoming fiscal year? And I know it's just an estimate, but do you have an idea what it might be?
Probably 13.5 to 14 million.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hales.
Thank you. So Shawna, if, and please correct me, you probably know these numbers off the top of your head, but, but, well, in our last budget cycle, we were, what, around 12 million for charter schools?
I think when we, last, last budget cycle, we were at 12, and we, this current year, we're at 13.
Okay, so we're.
So we were adding to it. So I'm anticipating it to be 13.5 to 14 million next year.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for this presentation?
Board members, any other questions?
Thank you.
Is it?
Dr. Houlihan.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you have anything to add?
We'll go back to the county commissioners. Commissioner Sodz, are you good?
Would it be appropriate to offer comments, feedback, personal thoughts at this time? Is that, yes? Okay, I'll take it as a yes. Following comments I make are mine, my own. I do not seek to represent any other of the commissioners or the county commission as a whole. I would assume you have prioritized the capital items. Let me get to that. The actual building projects, roofing, painting, and equipment. I assume the facilities committee has prioritized that some shape or form. I think it's going to be difficult to get the full amount that you're proposing, so I would prepare contingencies if you haven't already ranked the must-have to the want-have or however you want to rank them. I would just personally suggest that you look at that because I think the full amount will be difficult. I would also like to add, personally, one of the highest priorities for me is the increase in the teacher supplement. And I would ask that, that county staff, in preparing our budget, if necessary, perhaps we could look at the approach that we've used for county employees and law enforcement, and that's a phased-in approach with some amount at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then either the remainder or another partial phased in in the first quarter, or the final amount that would be available in the budget for increase in supplement at the beginning of the last quarter of the year. So if it is not feasible in the budget, the way it's, ends up to do a full supplement from the beginning of the fiscal year, if it could, if it's possible to phase in so that by the end of the fiscal year, it is a $2,000 increase in supplement, I would encourage staff to offer that.
Commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions? Thank you. Yes. County Manager Bron Matthews.
Thank you. So, and I appreciate that Dr. Houlihan, you know, talked about our relationship that we have with staff to staff, and we really do have a great working relationship. We, we, we understand and we knew that they had some needs and some challenges that they were going to face. And, and our chair, she, she points this out regularly, as she should, there's a big chunk of your budget that goes to charter schools, and we all have no control over that. And unfortunately, that is just the nature of the beast that we deal with. The good news is, good, good or bad, is with organic growth, you will see about $8 million in additional funds for your operating expenses. Now that is $10 million off of what you've indicated your needs are. You show your needs at 18 million above what we normally budget. We've got about eight that we certainly can allocate towards any additional spending needs that you have. The gap is 10 million plus, and obviously, the board's going to have to talk about what we do with that and how we accommodate that. That's not capital, that's just the operating side of it. The capital is, is a different story. We'll certainly have to look at that. So I, I do want to say that there is at least some positives. We are going to gain that organic growth. It is relatively, it is larger than we would normally get in a year. That, that's good news. So that is something that I, I think that we'll work with Dr. Houlihan and his staff, identify things that he can certainly accomplish with those funds, and then we'll talk to the board about what they wish to do beyond that. So I, I did want to make sure that there's, it's not doom and gloom, there is some positives that are coming out of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for mentioning that.
Before we get to closing comments, for, from the chair and myself, Dr. Houlihan, did you have anything you'd like to share?
Just from my perspective, thank you to the UCS board for your support, and thank you to the Board of County Commissioners. You know, a couple of items that I think will continue to be a high priority for us. Number one will be teacher supplements. We've got to remain competitive when it comes to teacher salary increases. The second one, as a reminder, Ms. McLamb said this, the Board of County Commissioners last year, and we're very appreciative of this, did allocate one-time funds for some, building a sustainability plan coming off of federal ESER funding specifically for tutoring for our EC program. We've implemented a brand-new program down at Parkwood Middle this year with a partner called Chance Light for our exceptional childrens. I would encourage any of you to go visit that school and to take a look at what's happening. It's absolutely phenomenal. But those are just some examples of, when you're given one-time funds, we're trying to figure out how to make that permanent. The other piece with that is our tutoring program, a request I would make with you. Last year, I sent the Board of County Commissioners and the UCS board what was called an interim report that was done by the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill that pointed to the fact that this model is certainly generating a high return on investment. That report will be completed, we believe, by the end of this month, if not before. When I receive that report, I will be glad to send that to both boards as well because that will be a public policy piece that will be presented to the General Assembly. I say all that to say, it would be great to continue advocating, also at the state level, for state funding to make that recurring for districts like us who are choosing to implement a national research-based model that's getting results for kids. So that would be my one request from this meeting coming from the B O C C as well.
Thank you, Dr. Houlihan. Vice Chairman Hales?
I just want to thank the county commission for coming here tonight and hearing our budget requests that we have, or presentation, not request right now. But I just want to thank you, and if there's any more comments.
Board Member Mario?
Likewise, appreciate you all coming here and listening to our requests and appreciate the relationship that we have. Thank you.
Board Member Green?
I share their sentiments, and I also just also wanted to make sure, you know, it is known that we, we really do, we know that this, we're waiting still on the state and everything, God help us, and, but we definitely need to really, really consider a, a major supplement for our teachers. I mean, they are, we are so, we're struggling so much with that. We have, you know, but, we talked about this the other day, I remember with Tahira, one of the reasons why people come to Union County, the biggest reason is the schools. And we can't seem to provide, you know, not provide, but just have such a difficulty keeping our teachers and keeping good ones. I mean, just in my daughter's school, we've had several that have left, and that is really hard to take. So I'm just asking again, and you know, that's something that is, that is a big priority for us, is teacher supplements. So if y'all can really consider that and just, I'd appreciate it. But thank you very much for hearing our requests.
Board Member Tucker?
I'd like to second what Ms. Green said. Obviously, money is a driving factor for talent acquisition. You have increase in pay, better talents will more likely come to you. So I stand behind Ms. Green firmly on that.
Board Member Heidhul, and before she speaks, I just want to say she is our immediate past chair who served us so well. Thank you. I complimented you.
Thanks. We have a lot of needs to keep our schools district, and we need to do that. So we have to talk to everybody and see what we can do because we don't want it to go down. Yeah. Thank you.
Board Member May?
I'm at the end practically, except for Reverend Kirkpatrick, so repeating what everybody else said, and we do appreciate that you came for the meeting, and it's nice to have three former Board of Education members on the county commissioners. So thank you.
Board Member Reverend Kirkpatrick?
Happy to be you. But anyway. I want to agree with, first of all, thank you all for joining us as well, and as my former board members have said, teachers' supplements are very important. When I think about it, some of the disadvantages that we have in District One, we have children who come from broken families, disadvantages in all type of areas, and I can just imagine having the right teacher in their classroom, because there are great teachers who are not in the classroom, who may be working in other fields. But because of the lack of compensation when you have a family, it's kind of hard to do your passion when you have to pay your bills. And so I really, really encourage our county commissioners to look at the big need as it pertains to not just asking for money just to fund a teacher, but to help to fund a child an opportunity. And so thank you again for coming, and hopefully, our conversation today has enlightened you all just a little bit more to understand the great things that we do here in UCS. And I promise you that money will help us do even greater things in the upcoming year.
Thank you, board members. And before we hear from our superintendent, do any of the staff have anything that might add to this meeting? You are here, you're faithful, did we cover, that there are some answers that you think that we might need from any of the staff that is here? I don't, I don't want to let this day go by, and then we're talking about, about a water cooler. Anybody? All right. Dr. Houlihan has a couple of more items he'd like to address.
I have to be on record for saying this, so two more things I forgot to say last time. Number one, a big, big compliment to the, to the B O C C. Last year, you also worked with Sheriff Kathy to build in funding to ensure that all of our schools are now one-to-one with one SRO to every school, and we're, I think, one of the largest counties to accomplish that. So I just wanted to say thank you all for supporting our school safety initiatives. That is a huge piece for our community and our schools, and wanted to be on record for saying thank you for, for funding that. The second piece that Ms. McLamb didn't comment on is, we do have a request this evening in our, or presented to our board. One of the items for program expansion is around nursing. We are wanting to build in a phased-in approach to bring, make sure that we have, that every single school has a nurse in every building. That is extremely important for our students and staff. When we had federal funding from the pandemic, we were able to support that. This is the first year we're back to being short 10. So we have a five-year plan to bring two more back per year, and that's one of the line items that I just wanted you all to be aware of that we are, that we'll be asking for with the, the board's budget request. Thank you.
We're at closing comments, and it's on you, Madam Chair.
Any closing comments from the county commissioners? Yes?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hales?
Thank you. Just real quick, I, I want to say this, that since I've been on the board, I, I've been very pleased to see the, the progress and the relationship between these two bodies and, as well as our staff. I, I think that that's a, a great thing, not only for each individual board, but for the county as a whole. And I want to thank all of the board members on both sides, you know, for their efforts in making that relationship better. I want to thank Dr. Houlihan for bringing up the, the ESER funds and the, and the tutor program. I've, I've long supported that. That is a program that has gotten proven results, and I, I think it's one that, that we all should advocate for. I think that parents should advocate for it as well. I, I think this has been a very good meeting. I think that, you know, a lot of information has been shared, and I just want to say thank you. Thanks for having us.
I want to echo Commissioner Hales' comments. It has been a delight to be back with you tonight. Thank you for all the hard work that each of you do every day to support the best school district in North Carolina. I want to thank Chair Reverend Jimmy Benson for hosting us, for everyone hosting us tonight, and thank you, Dr. Houlihan, for your great leadership, for leading such a, a great public education resource for the students in Union County, the students and parents that depend on Union County Public Schools. And I also want to recognize and thank our CFO for being here today. to recognize and thank our CFO for being here tonight. I know our finance department has worked very hard. So I want to thank you for being here tonight and the work that you brought to present. And our county manager, thank you for being here to support our board and for being such a willing partner with our, with our schools. Thank you all. Commissioner Sodz?
It's good to see everyone again. I kind of remember this building. I have to give a shout out to everyone involved in the Special Olympics. It has been a true joy to watch the competition of some of our special students. And I want to congratulate Dr. Harvey on another great hosting, the folks at Sun Valley High. On a slightly different note, there was an item that I had hoped to discuss. I thought it relevant since we were together, but that it was not on the agenda. And in the capital plan for the county, it involves actually next year, the initial planning and design of a UCPS administration building. Now, the county is in long-term plan in need of additional space. And I hope that we will begin the process of looking at site options to move forward in the next fiscal year with the design, location, and then in the following year, the construction as per the capital plan. So I will look forward to dialogue and the work on the part of county staff to continue to address this issue to fruition. Thanks.
All right. My closing comments are, I ditto all that the, the board members shared. So no need to repeat that. So I can just get into some niceties. And that is just to thank you all, members of the Union County Board of County Commissioners, your county manager, your staff for coming today. I hope the eatery that was supplied was scrumptious and you'll walk away feeling good. We're just, I have come, I'm born in Hope County, North Carolina. But I have said to many that Monroe is my newly adopted hometown and Union County is a place that I'm glad to be from. And it is a great joy as I travel this nation to brag on Union County, North Carolina. You all make us proud. The needs have been addressed. We do sincerely ask that you consider all our requests. But more than that, we thank you for standing with us. We thank you for supporting us. We thank you for aiding us. And this is a great meeting tonight. And I'm so appreciative of the Union County Board of Education and our staff. And I just want to say thank you all for coming. Our, the greatest superintendent in the whole state. We, we have him right here and we are so appreciative. So with that, since I have the mic, I'm gonna go ahead and I'll accept a motion to adjourn the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
And I will make a motion to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.